Good morning, everyone. Be calling Board of Commissioners regular meeting for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. If you could please join me for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag as the state of New Mexico, the zeasimple of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item is approval of the regular meeting agenda. Sub motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Flores. Do we have any discussion? Okay, seen on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Public input, do we have anyone for public input? Okay, the one for public input. Moving on to next item, be a presentation for the Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program. Dare, Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to do a presentation on our Dare program as we have a request for some funding to be able to help us get this program to continue. I'm gonna have one of my Dare officers do the presentation and we'd be happy to answer any questions after, if you have any questions after the presentation. This is Sergeant Jake Benavides. He is the active with the Dare program, so he'll be doing presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Sergeant Jake Benavides. I'm the current Dare Coordinator for our Dare program here in Grant County. Just a little background on me, I've been a Dare officer since 2019. I've also held multiple positions at our state level for our New Mexico Dare State Board. So we're pretty involved in it here. First of all, for those of you who don't know what Dare is, the Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program, it's nationally recognized and we're also going international as well. We're also starting to have some of those international conferences here in the states as well to kind of get everybody more involved. Our biggest thing is teaching decision-making, confidence and safety skills with our students. This new Dare program is totally revamped from the older one that a lot of us remember where it was strictly about drugs. We're not focused on the drugs as a part anymore. We're focused on making them smarter individuals to be able to make adult choices in their lives and be able to be free thinkers for themselves, to be able to make those kinds of choices and have them lead better lives. So our mission here in Grant County is to provide that proactive education to each of these students. Not only do we do that, we try and give them the power to resist any kind of peer pressure, make informed choices. Like I said, this whole program is totally different from just drugs and alcohol. We're teaching them as many life skills as we can to prepare them for the future as well. With this program, we do believe that it also strengthens our relationship with the students and the community. We're out there, we're super involved with all the kids. One of the best things about our program individually is we're the only Dare program in the state that utilizes both county and city officers. We made this decision a couple of years back to go ahead and bring the Silver City Police Department along with us as well. Because they do, they come out here, they help us in the county, we help them in the city. We want a unified approach towards these students. They're not always gonna see our uniforms, they're not always gonna see the cities. It was a great way for us to kind of bridge that gap between our two departments and the community itself to show them we are one team. We care about, not only on the law enforcement side, we care about them on their kids, their education, everything else. Trying to show that unified front. I believe this year, some other counties in Silver City, I'm sorry, not Silver City, city agencies are gonna try that approach as well within the state, see how it goes as well, kind of take a page out of our book as well. So right now, we are teaching in every single elementary school in the Grant County area. We also go to Mimbres, Cliff, everywhere. Everywhere there's an elementary school, the Dare program is there right now. We have done additional lessons for school staff and communities. I know myself, I've taught some of the Silver's consolidated staff as well. Meeting full of two, three hundred people, we're doing lessons for them as well. We try and go into the schools, we'll do some lessons for just the teachers themselves, other community outreaches that come to us. We have lessons for everything. Whenever officers go to a training, we have giant books, have lessons on any grade level, any education level, we're ready for it. So some of our core lessons that we teach is our Dare decision-making model. This is kind of the backbone of our program or what we base it on, that they can make smart decisions with some thought process behind it instead of just jumping the gun. We also do touch on the effects of alcohol, tobacco, drugs, so they're not as heavy as we used to. We have updated lessons every year, which is why we go to our conference. Some of these updated lessons include baking, marijuana, stuff that we're seeing in our schools actively and they're trying to come back. We teach them communication skills, confidence building. We also touch a lot on bullying, especially like last year, we had a whole new lesson on cyberbullying. It's one of the bigger issues, the Dare program tries to stay on top of everything we're seeing in these schools so that they can give it to us when we go to our conference and we really lay it down when we go teach. Like I was talking about earlier, we have supplemental curriculums that we do teach the community itself. Our lessons are tailored for age, community needs, whatever it may need. We do have lessons ready to go for middle school and high school presentations as well. We've done a couple of those. We have side lessons on specific drugs itself such as fentanyl, opioid abuse. And like I said, recently with our internet safety and our cyberbullying, which has been a huge issue within our schools. Beyond our classroom, we do community outreach programs as well. We also participate in events such as the Buddy Walk, Truck Retreat, Easter Egg Hunt. We try and attend the prevention days at the high schools, both Cobra and Silver. And we also attend the domestic violence seminars as well. One of the key factors of us being in the classrooms is sometimes these children bring their problems to us. We're seeing as trusted adult figures in their lives, so we try and get some supplemental training on our end as well to be able to handle those kind of what-ifs, if a student comes and reports either a crime to us, they have problems at home, we make sure all of our Dare officers are ready to handle those kinds of situations as well. As far as the lasting impact on students, it builds trust in law enforcement at a young age. That's where they're most susceptible to the influence of their peers, media, anything else. We try and snag them right then and there, let them know what we're about, why we're actually here. Try and reinforce those positive behaviors, positive choices that they're gonna make later on in their lives, encourage safe and healthy lifestyles with them with our teachings. And we've had a lot of testimony, we always do an essay contest every year as well to reflect and see how our students are grasping our ten-week program. We've had really good feedback on that. We've actually had one student make it through the state level and onto the national level here as well. So we are seeing great essays that are coming through, the kids are grasping what we're teaching them and they're laying it back to us so we know that we are doing a good job out there. Some of our incentives for participating in this program, we reward them at the pizza party to award their hard efforts. It's a ten-week program in the schools, so the schools themselves and the teachers, they do sacrifice a lot for us to be in there. It's an hour a week that we go in there and we all know an hour of time is definitely worth a lot in some of our professions. So we do reward them with that. Our graduations, we've now gone from, instead of just having a single graduation at each school, to larger community events where we can invite everybody. When we do our Silver Schools graduation, we have it there at the Fine Art Center. And we do our Cobra Schools graduation, we have it there at the PAC Center at Cobra High. This allows the community to go in there and be engaged with us as well and for all the families and everybody else to join as well, so we haven't limited seating. When we do anything like that, our pizza, our waters, the bicycles we buy from the students, we always use local vendors. We try to get back to the community that way, they usually help us out as well, but it's something to show them appreciation as well that we want this program to go forward, we want the community's help as well with that. You know, it's not just us, it's Papa John's that helps us out, Walmart, Albertson's, whoever it may be. We always try and get them involved in well this program and make sure that they're recognized during our graduation as well. Like I kind of talked a little about before, our essays, we've had some that, like I said, have won the state level, go on to nationals, so we are getting really good feedback on that, that the students are actively participating and understanding our lessons. As far as teacher and parent feedback, we've had nothing but positive evaluations from our faculty and staff. If you were to speak to one of our Dare teachers, as we call them, they love our program. They're a hundred percent about it, they love us being in the schools. It gives them time to kind of talk about other stuff besides math, science, and kind of engage with these kids on a different level that they may not get to during their regular school year. Our request for the expanded presence, they're wanting us in the schools. We've actually gone as far as sending our Dare officers to a school resource officer training as well to get some added bonus with them so that they have a little bit more of that background when they're in the schools. We know the schools are the back of our hand, we're in them more than anybody. It allows us to kind of have that extra step if something were to happen or to how to engage with these kids if they do bring up problems and issues to us. As far as our training itself, each Dare officer has to go two weeks of rigorous training. This includes doing lesson plans every night, teaching every day, it's a pretty rigorous course. At the end, you do get evaluated by testing out and going to one of the local schools and teaching a full hour-long Dare lesson. In order to be selected as a Dare officer, they have to be recommended by their administration as being an outstanding person in their department, good leaders, role models, such as that. As of right now, within our Dare program, we currently have three board members on the state board from just our local Dare program, which is amazing. That usually never happens, but our community is so involved in Dare, our guys are so committed to it that they're going to the state level now and trying to make changes up there and help us out. We're also engaging statewide efforts for legislate as far as Dare programs, getting some Dare funding, still working out some of the kinks in that, but that's kind of the major end goal for Dare in New Mexico as far as the state level is trying to get this, something that's permanent. Every year, we do have a weekly long conference that we go to. The reason for this is that Dare America gives us updates every year for our teachings. Whether it's the stats on alcohol, tobacco usage, whether the age limits have changed for drinking, or they just want to add something new to the curriculum, this is where we get our new info from. It helps us develop new lesson plans, if anything changes, that's how we get all of our information. This week-long conference is also how we maintain our certification. Just with some of our regular law enforcement certifications where we have to go through updates, yearly training, stuff like that to keep our certs, Dare is the same way. So this is how we keep our cert, we get our new information, we come back and bring it to the schools. Our community collaboration is huge here in Grant County. Almost everybody knows about the Dare program. We get a hundred requests every year, it's an awesome thing to have. We have some really good partnerships with the schools and youth groups around the area. It helps us build stronger community ties to everybody. You know, especially that we have such things like the Dare Truck, we go through the parade and stuff. The kids love it, it's something that I think is a symbol here in Grant County now and that we can utilize to make things better for our community. Usually annually, we graduate about three hundred students, and that's between the Silver and Cobra districts. We usually do Cobra in the fall, Silver in the spring. We also engage in Red Ribbon Week, which is a whole week about drug abuse, alcohol abuse. We're fully engaged in that as well. The way that we kind of measure our success is by our essays, like I've talked about before. See if our lessons are being reinforced, if the kids are fully engaged in what we're talking about. And if not, we reflect on those, what can we have done better in that school? What can we have done better on our lessons maybe? And we self-evaluate ourselves so we can bring that and make it better. Some of our current program challenges is obviously funding. Funding is always one of the biggest issues. We have a lot of travel costs to our rural schools for continued training and our recertifications every year. Unfortunately, Dare is just one of those things that does operate on money. Some of our requests that we're doing is for materials and handouts to our schools. When we go and teach, every student does get a Dare handbook that they keep when we are done with the program. This includes all of our ten lessons, everything else. If we go do community events or we go do some community teachings such as the schools, anywhere else, we like to have handouts and pamphlets for them as well so that we help reinforce the lessons that we're there teaching. We also do like the community event, stuff like that, we like to hand out stuff for our students and our community. One of the big things, we're always back every year is to jump into summer program. So part of that is healthy lifestyles, healthy summer. So we try and give them goodies that help them remain active, such as frisbees, water bottles, stuff that's gonna promote them to be healthy and active during the summer rather than just handing out candy to the kids. The investment on Dare, I believe, is huge. Prevention, starting now, is gonna save us down the long run for any problems that we may run into. Like I said, fifth grade is really kind of the key age group that we like to hit on because that's the age where they're kind of starting to make their adult decisions, their adult minds are developing. It's easy for us to go in there because we can have more adult conversations with them before they've already kind of decided how they're gonna run their show. We try and build a legacy of leadership and respect within our schools. Like I said, each of my Dare officers are widely known, we can't go anywhere without somebody saying hi. And to me, that's awesome, that means we're engaged, we're involved and we're making a difference somewhere. Some of the stuff we're looking forward to in the future, that's myself, Corporal Hare and Corporal Flores from the city. We currently all just finished our FBI Trilogy Leadership Training. That's a huge program, that's a three-stage program, so six weeks in total for us to do that. And we want to try and bring some of that back to our community. Each of our Dare officers are all supervisors as well, showing their leadership skills, that they want to be involved in our community, they want to be involved in our departments as well. Some stuff we've talked about is maybe some summer leadership programs when the school is out. Try and keep that Dare lesson and that Dare engaged twenty-four seven as much as we can. Our biggest thing we're asking for is support, obviously. This is an excellent program for our community. It's not about us, it's about the kids, our community helping them out. This is one of the best ways that us as law enforcement can reach out to our community. You know, we can do as much as we can, prevent crime, everything else, but being in the schools with this children, being out there in the community, that's what we're supposed to be doing. Community policing is number one, and that's the biggest thing that we can, as law enforcement officers, integrate ourself in. And for us, this is one of the best ways to do it. We're established here with the Dare program, our schools know it, our kids know it, it's something we like to continue from here on. One of the slides I didn't get in there is our conference expenses, which I can email, copy to all of you as well. Total cost for just myself and Corporal Mead from our Grant County area, we're looking probably about two to three grand for that. As far as total cost, we're looking about twelve thousand five hundred, if that's possible. Ten of that would be going towards our school and our community programs that we use, which is me buying handouts for the kids, their T-shirts that they get during graduation as well, and be able to hand out supplies and everything else when we go to our community events as well. So thank you guys for your time, your commitment to us. We're free to answer any questions, but we'd just like to say thank you for even having us here and giving us that opportunity to kind of let our community know what we're about and that we do want to continue this as well.
Do you have any questions, Commissioners?
I'll go first, thank you. Mr. Chairman. Is it Deputy Benavides?
Sergeant.
Sergeant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, you're a great presenter and I think we needed to understand it better. I've taught to teachers and I've never had a negative comment or that it wasn't valuable. I think the real critical pieces, like you've mentioned several times in the presentation, is that interaction. So what I'm hearing is really to sustain it just as it is today, you need, we need to fund twelve thousand dollars?
Yes, sir, so like I said, we do have times for the future. Obviously, that's something that we can tackle when we get there. But to sustain what we're doing right now with our community events and our teaching in schools, that's about what we need right now to sustain what we got.
Okay, and do you do any other kind of fundraising for Dare in the community?
So we do, we do have some donors that come around every once in a while that do come and make a donation in Dare program. I'm actually working with the sheriff right now to get a donation letter started so we can kind of go throughout the community and do that as well. In years past, we did have a very generous anonymous donor who did give a good amount to the Dare program. Unfortunately, they're not here in Grant County anymore, so now we're trying to kind of pick up where where they left off and see how we're gonna continue to build this program. So they gave us the head start, gave us all the room to run, now we gotta keep running with it.
And then I guess my last question is, so how does someone donate and make sure that it gets to Dare?
So anytime that we have anybody that wants to make a donation to Dare, we have them come straight here to the county office. They can get with our payroll, I'm not sure exactly who does, takes the donation there, but we always have them come straight here. None of our officers try and take any money, just so that there's no inclusion of anybody kind of missing funds, anything else like that. We try and have them come straight here to the county building so that donation goes right in there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Sergeant Benavides. Like Commissioner O'Shelly said, I really appreciated your presentation and you clearly know what you're talking about and it seems to matter to you, so thanks for taking time. You all know I've been critical of Dare. And in a couple of meetings previously, I brought up my concern that there had been some evidence that while it might have a lot of benefits, it doesn't deter drug use. So I did a little bit more reading and it sounds like there are some real benefits, not just here locally, but the program as a whole. One of which is the positive relationship between police and juveniles, building that rapport. Like you said, people know your name, they see you on the street and looking down into, or out into the future, you know, you're probably gonna have interaction with those same individuals as they become parents and so on. So that's a real positive. Also, I think you are providing accurate information to young people, which is really valuable. And I have been reading that there is a recognition of the need for Dare to evolve and become more updated and modernized. I saw an acronym, Keeping It Real, which is refuse, explain, avoid and leave. I don't know if you all are using that in your curriculum?
Yes, ma'am, so the Keeping It Real is the curriculum we use for our fifth grade class.
Okay.
But like I said, this is the reason we go to our conferences every year because Dare has been revamped. So we found that in enforcing, making smart decisions, making adult decisions, avoiding peer pressure, a lot of that's helping negate the drug effect. Instead of just hitting drugs are bad, drugs are bad, drugs are bad, this is how you determine drugs are bad. This is how you determine how to make a better choice. So because the program got revamped, that's why we're seeing a lot more success now.
I'm happy to hear that. As a social worker, I've, in my experience, it's not effective to tell kids to just say no and I think Dare has moved away from that. And I think that's because one of the most important things we can do for young people is to be honest. And so if we tell them to say no and then they see family members who are using, they just discount everything authority figures have told them, right?
Yes, ma'am, I agree.
Because they're like, well, they're fine, they're going to work.
No, and that's a part, right? We want to empower them to make those choices.
Yeah.
Make sure they understand it's their choice to do that.
So I'm happy about that. I guess the only drawbacks are it is resource-heavy. You know, like from what you're describing, this is a big investment of your all's time and energy, it does take money. And so I think it is important, you mentioned the return on investment. I think we should participate in any research opportunities to really look at what are, how do we define success? And are we making progress? And you know, it is good that we're developing positive relationships, but I think as law enforcement officers, your focus of course is on crime prevention, which includes substance use. And so any way we could increase our data or evidence that the program is working for those goals, that would make me happy.
Yes, ma'am, yeah, and like I said, one of the recent partnerships we actually made was with the Youth Coalition. They have a bunch of stats that we're kind of helping with that. I'm also now myself attending the regular JPO meetings as well, so we're getting a little bit of feedback on that, right? Has a student been through Dare? Okay, they have, are they still having these issues? Is it related to something that we could have prevented? So we're trying to get some more data built because some of the possibility as well is if we have that data, we can apply for other grants, stuff like that, that we can show, okay, here's our success metrics. From 2019 to 2021, this is the drop in juvenile cases we saw, or this or that. So we are focusing on that, it just takes a lot. We have a lot of students to go through, but that is one of our goals, is to kind of be able to sit here and proudly say, hey, since we started this program, this is where we're at now, this is what we want to continue.
Thank you, one last thought. I know the Community Health Council, they're another good partner or resource and I believe that their current director is pretty well-informed about the harm reduction model. So any collaboration you can do with them, I think that would be great.
Yes, ma'am, we will look into that definitely.
And I guess, you know, this mostly goes to the sheriff. You know, when I went to Silver City PD, we started the Dare program and it's a great program. I don't have a problem with supporting Dare, I've seen how it has evolved with our changing times. And it's really good for the kids, it's really good for the community. And like I told you, you know, the other day, I would support, you know, getting you money. You know, the biggest question that I have is you're the sheriff, you're an elected official, you run your department, how you want to run your department, we're Commissioners. We don't have much of a say-so over another elected official, but one thing that I do look at is if you have an administrative sergeant or administrative people doing the Dare program or running the Dare program that have mostly office jobs, that's great. But, and I don't know, and I'm asking because I don't know, but when you have a sergeant that's critical to their shift, to being out there with their employees if they're on shift, developing, supervising, holding them accountable for things. And if we're taking, the biggest, I guess, criticism, for lack of better words, is if we're taking a sergeant off a shift and a corporal off a shift, that sort of worries me a little bit, is that, you know, because a sergeant, as you know, is probably the most critical piece you have on the street with his deputies, with his deputies to answer questions, to make sure they have the resources, make sure they have the direction that they have to be able to fulfill their duties out here in the community. So if I have any type of criticism would be that, you know, maybe it would be an administrative position or it'd be a deputy that's not crucial to the shift while you have a sergeant or a corporal teaching the Dare. Other than that, I think this is a great program. I don't know if we're paying overtime because of, you know, maybe the shifts, his shifts on graveyard that they teach or, you know, I don't really know how many days or hours they do teach that, but just, you know, take that into consideration.
Yeah, if you want.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You bring up a really good point in regards to that. Fortunately, the two Dare officers that are currently, they just recently got promoted, so that is something that we're trying to recruit new blood into, coming in to do Dare during the time that it's needed. So that's something that we're working on and, but you know, right now, we have what we have and our goal is to bring in a few more Dare officers, that's what we collaborated with the city, to be able to help each other. And you are right, some of the times, these guys are not even on shift when they're out there teaching, so we never leave a shift uncovered with what's required. They do go teach, but we always have enough coverage and I get the supervisory stuff and I appreciate your comment on that because that is something crucial where I do believe we need to have our supervisors out more with our staff. And, but that's our goal, is to bring in more and bring in the younger ones that are deputy, regular deputies, just to be out there and be participating. But thank you for the comment and I, we are already looking into that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've mentioned several times the cooperation and collaboration with the town of Silver City. Are they providing funding?
Yes, I believe they have some, I think the sheriff has a little more than that than I do though.
So I did reach out to the chief a few months, a couple of months ago and I did report to you all that the city also is contributing to fund their portion of what they need to require or what they're gonna donate and I was told by the chief that the city manager had approved ten thousand for them as well.
Can I ask one more thing?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just, one thing could you clarify for me? As you were running through all the costs to administer the program, you mentioned travel costs to rural schools, why is that an additional cost when you should already be patrolling those areas anyways? Could you clarify what you mean by travel?
Yeah, for some of our officers, especially, like I said, the city kind of takes their own thing, but for myself or Deputy Mead, I'm sorry, Corporal Mead, either if we're off duty, because we have to drive to Mimbres or Cliff, sometimes that's more overtime. Other times too, if it's not one of us and the city has to go over there, that's a cost of driving them from the city to the Mimbres to the Cliff. We don't want to. We don't want to exclude these schools as well, so just sometimes, unfortunately, the way scheduling works, sometimes it's a lot of off, and we do have to go out there, make that class time. So sometimes we do accrue that overtime to say, you know, okay, if I'm, I personally live in the Membres, so if I have to go teach Cliff that day, that's a whole hour and a half that I'm driving just to get there. So that's what we kind of put in there to kind of show sometimes, yeah, unfortunately, we do accrue a little bit of that, that extra money to try and get to a classroom, just depending on how our scheduling is. We try and do as much to mitigate that, either myself or whoever on duty tries to go instead. But sometimes we're at critical incidents, we just can't make the class. So we call or text somebody to kind of replace us for that day and unfortunately, sometimes it's that. How it goes is we're coming from one end of the county to the other to go teach because somebody's tied up. But we try to never miss a class if we don't have to.
Thank you, Zep. You good, county manager? Commissioner Flotis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, when you, when you are off duty and you go teach a class, now technically you're on duty, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yep. Now, do you call in 10-8 to central dispatch?
Yes, sir. So any, and at least for us on the countryside, if we come into Dare, we do call 10-8, let dispatch that we're, that we're doing Dare and what school we're gonna be at.
Would you also notify a supervisor that you're 10-8 for that day, for that time period?
Most of the time we do, the supervisor will hear it. Being that it's just myself and corporal me, we already know each other's schedule. So at the beginning of every year, I hand out a schedule to all of our officers with what class they're teaching, what time it is, and what deputy or officer is gonna be there for that day.
So the reason I'm asking is just a, a check and balances, a check and balance system here, but the other part of it is in a crucial crisis, let's say for example, a dust storm, and there was a need for deputies. Because you, you should be available, if you're 10-8, you should be available at any time to handle anything. Would you be available, obviously, to break off from teaching, to go block a highway or assist anybody in a crucial time?
In a crit- critical incident? Yes, sir, I believe so. The good part is a lot of our teachers are very understanding about our job as well. We've been there for years, so we, we made these relationships with them. They do understand that sometimes when that radio goes off, it's go time and we don't have a choice. And they've been really good with us about that. Like I said, we try not to miss any class if we have to, but sometimes we've had, I've been on critical incidents, on rollovers where I just could not get out to class. But I've also instilled that in my Dare officers to give the teacher a heads up, you know, let them know you aren't gonna be there, whatever it may be. If it's mid-class, just explain to them what's going on so we can go. But I believe because of that relationship we've made, we are 100% able to do that. And I, I personally have done that before. I've been on duty where we had a rollover mid-class. I was the closest one available. I let the teacher know, hey, this is what we have, I gotta go, can we continue this lesson another day? Yeah, sure. I go and handle my business on patrol, get back with the teacher, and we reschedule to finish that class. But most of this, the teachers, like I said, are Dare teachers as we call them, they're really understanding about us having to leave if we need to.
Because I think that's a criticism that we would probably face in the future if there was a critical incident. Hypothetically, let's say somebody in that class was injured or worse, and they said, well, there was a deputy or a city officer teaching us during that time, and it was, it was in Cliff and, and the, the crisis was at, in, in Mill Creek. And that's the first thing they say, well, why didn't that deputy respond? Why did they have to wait for somebody from Silver City? That's what I'm looking at, where it's not a matter of, I think I can go, it's just, hey, there's, there's a priority, prioritization. And obviously, a critical incident is more important than teaching a class. That's what I'm trying to get at. And there'd be no doubt to say, I have to leave, I'm gonna go and I'll reschedule this class later. That, that's where, I don't want a deputy or a, a city officer, well, maybe not city, but deputy thinking, well, I'm midway through the class, I'm almost done, I'll just take care of it, somebody else will handle it. That's my concern, is that you are 10-8, you, you are getting paid overtime, and it is to teach Dare, however, in that time of need, that dispatch can call you and say, you need to go handle this call, and you just go handle it. That's my concern.
Yes, sir. And one of the things that myself and the sheriff worked on too, we always start our officer, patrol comes first. You know, Dare, Dare is a privilege, it really is, for us to be able to go out there and do that. But myself and corporal me, and even the guys that come and help us with the line and anything else, they understand if it's time to go, it's time to go. That's it. There's no ifs, ands, or whats about it. So that's one thing that we've, we've done and we kind of pride ourselves on is, yeah, we can make all these events and we do a bunch of stuff. Unfortunately, sometimes we don't, we can't make an event because we have stuff going on. So we charge best to at least notify whoever, you know, we're not gonna make it, we're gonna be late, whatever it may be. But to me, that's something crucial that, that that's the way I'd like to run Dare. Because patrol comes first, if we don't have the guys, if we don't have manpower, if we have something else going on, then so be it. Dare can always be rescheduled. You can't reschedule a critical incident.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sheriff, did you have something to say?
Sheriff, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Flotis, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on what, on your question. I appreciate the question because it is a legit question and I just wanted to put out there that any operation that we do, not just Dare, any overtime function, whether it be Step, Stone Garden, any special detail that we have, if there's ever any incident or, or something that happens where we need the extra officers to go respond, they are directed to break away from what they're doing and respond to assist with the patrol calls. I'll give you an example, if they're working Operation Stone Garden and say we have a critical incident, unfortunately, what they have to do is because they're getting paid under Stone Garden, they would have to stop the Stone Garden and then clock into county overtime and then respond. That, that helps with manpower issues if we have, say, instead of having to call somebody in, we already have somebody out. And it makes it a lot easier for the deputies to respond in a quicker and timely manner. But I appreciate the question and, and that is something that we do patrol. I have always told them patrol is priority. So if they're doing a special detail or function that we need, the, the county needs response, that they will respond to that.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? Great presentation, Sergeant. Appreciate it. That was very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
Thank you, Sheriff. Moving on to next item of the agenda is Gila Regional Medical Center report, Mr. Robert Whitaker, CEO, on the August report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Just want to go through a few stats, and I'll talk about year numbers, year-to-date numbers as we closed out our fiscal year in June. Admissions were a little higher than the previous year. We had more deliveries, more student admissions. Surgery was just a tad under, but we saw significant growth and continue to do so today with our outpatient visits, which include ER visits, outpatient visits of lab, radiology, cardio pulmonary visits. We started tracking our cancer center visits specifically, so I don't have a year-over-year number for that one quite yet, but, and then clinic visits, just, just a little under where we were the prior year. This resulted, for, for the month, we, we ran an operating surplus of 3.3 million. Some of the things that we were doing that contributed to that, we were making some final adjustments in preparation for our audit. I think there was a depreciation adjustment that we made that helped improve our bottom line as well. Year-to-date, when you look at our total surplus and when you exclude, and I'll kind of get to, get to it in a second, when you exclude what we call the HDAA program, we, we had an operating, a total surplus of 7.6 million. All right. We did, a board did approve our amended operating budgets. Our, our budget was higher than, than what we turned into the Office of State Auditor, and so we amended it and we've got that resolution and we'll get that over to OSA as well. You can see there, our operating revenue that we'd budgeted was 96.7 million, and we came in at 140 million. Our operating expenses, we had budgeted 91 million, and we came in 7.6 million higher, just about 99 million. And then our net surplus, our total surplus, we had budgeted 3.3 million, and we booked 41.6 million as an operating surplus. This was largely attributed again to the HDAA program. These funds go to specific things, and for us, we've been working and planning on, on facilities and, and what we're gonna do with the building and considerations there is where those funds are being held for. Just a few, a few things, I've talked about some town halls, we have some dates scheduled next Thursday, and I need to start working on my presentation, but in a week, I've got a town hall here in Silver City, and then in September, we have one in Membres, and we have the Tyrone one just about finished up, and that'll be, I think that's gonna be September 11th as well. So we'll, we'll have that. And just, just some other things, that we're doing some touch-up painting throughout the facility, just keeping the inside, you know, just bright and nice and, and the way it should look. So we've, we've been working on that. One of the things I wanted to highlight here is that we've, we've created and kind of formalized our community engagement and partnership program under Gila Regional Cares. And this is where we will do a lot of our, again, our community engagement and activities. We'll run through this, what we call Gila Regional Cares. When we do the GRMC Friends and Family Day, we're gonna do that again this year, kind of the second year we do, we do this, and it was highly successful last year, and we had a great time, and I want to continue with that program. Part of the Gila Regional Cares program includes our cafe sales donations to local groups that could benefit. We've, we've contributed to the commons, and just recently, there was an article about our contribution to SAS. And then El Refugio is our quarter three organization that we're gonna, that we'll contribute to and, and just help with that. And then, and then other community assistance and sponsorships. Sheriff, I'd be happy to, to help with, with the Dare program. In fact, it was just last week, I don't know how it came up, but it's a topic in our house, but my wife and our 11th grader were talking about it, and my 11th grader can still sing the Dare song, so something stuck at least with the program. Commissioners, that's, that's my report and happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. One thing that I'm, I'm looking here, and usually you brief us on, on the capital projects that you have going on, is, you know, looking at the days in cash, 146. I know that the prior commission has always been talking about, you know, investing more into our infrastructure, is that still continued?
Yes, sir, it is. We, we finished the fiscal year '25, right around 4 million in capital. And, and so there, there's, there's a little bit of lull when the fiscal year ends and the new fiscal year starts, everybody's got their stuff in and everybody's starting to ramp up in terms of spending capital, and so there's a couple of months where capital dollars kind of increase in terms of days. But we, we are still working though, and have to give consideration to some significant projects that need to be done, and that's where we've had conversations about the building and what we do there. So, yeah, so when you exclude those things, we, we do, we're on 146. But it's kind of, you know, we kind of close down new capital projects toward the end of the fiscal year, and it takes a month or two for, for directors to get projects going for the next fiscal year.
No, thank you. I really appreciate that because until we figure out what, what we're gonna do in the future, but the other part that, and I haven't kept up with it is, they, I call it labor and delivery, they call it match now. All that's been complete, the renovations and, and that, I haven't kept up with that.
Yes, sir. That project was finished, I think it was about eight months ago, eight, nine months ago, and a fantastic project. It's, it's been wonderful, a lot of positive feedback and positive reviews. Part of that project, we were able to participate, and I don't know the official names of these things, but in New Mexico, they have like reserves and warehouses of art that entities can borrow for a period of time, and, and we were given some grant dollars to put some really nice art, artwork up on the walls, and so we have those things up. Yeah, nursing staff and, and the medical staff and physicians have had positive things and really liked the new space. And I apologize, Mr. Chair, one, one other thing, there, there is some old space that we kind of moved out of, some old nursery space, and we've converted that. One of the things that we're doing in terms of resilience and wellbeing with our staff, we've converted half of that, that space that we evacuated left. It's just kind of a, kind of a rest space, there's a nice, a couple soft, you know, lounge type chairs in there and soft mood lighting, and so if anyone needs, when they take their break, and they can just go and just kind of sit and relax and do that. And then we've created a larger and better lactation room for, for any moms in the facility.
Thank you, appreciate that. And, excuse me, you know what, for, well, at least me, but I, I think it would be if, if the other commissioners were, were open to this, I know I am, is I'd really love to see the commission, especially that we have three new members of the commission, set up something with, with our county manager and you to do a tour of the hospital. I know that behavioral health has changed a little bit, now we have orthopedics in there, you know, looking at the, what you just described, and, and start looking at some of the stuff that you guys have done. So it'd be great, and, and I don't know how everybody else feels, to, to do a walkthrough there, just so you can explain things to us, you know, with us, so let us take the paperwork because it could, we could have a quorum. So here in the near future, I'd really like to see something like that happen.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think that'd be wonderful. We could look at those things, look at some of the challenges and some plans and ideas that we have as well, and just walk the facility, I think would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, anything else? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you for the presentation. I just had a question. I was wondering if you plan to reserve funds for anticipated Medicaid reductions?
Yeah, so when, when we look at the reductions in Medicaid and what that means and with the federal bill, a, a lot of the, a lot of things don't occur until maybe like a year and a half, a couple of years down the road, the federal budget fiscal year '27, which starts in October '26. Currently, it's, it's a little challenging because there have been some federal bills introduced to roll back some of those things, so it, it's just so up and down at the moment. We tend, we continue to operate as efficiently as possible and, and making sure we provide great patient care. We take a look at our revenue cycle operations, and we've been doing a lot of work surrounding that and, and making improvements just in, in our ability to collect from insurances and payers as we should be paid. I, I can't say that, that we've necessarily put any dollars in reserve in, in terms of balance sheet reserves for Medicaid reductions, but we do continue to monitor how changes may affect us and, and look in that regard.
Thank you. Commissioner Medina?
Mr. Whitaker, I've got a lot of phone calls regarding the recent monetary token appreciation for the employees. Can you brief the commissioner on that real quick?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Medina. So one of the things we had, as, as I presented, I apologize if I included some of my original report, we, we had a really good fiscal year, quality-wise and finance-wise, and, and one of the things that I, I wanted to do is, you know, it's not, it's not me, right, necessarily doing all the things every day that with patients that, that make us successful as an organization. And so I was wanting us and me and the administrative council, look for ways in which we could share back some of those, that surplus in those areas with our staff in terms of retention and, and employee engagement. And so we, we took a portion, it was about a half a million dollars, $500,000 that, that we provided to staff in terms of a share back, and, and we made calculations, and so all the, all full-time folks, regardless of anyone's current rate of pay, all got an equal amount of, of that share back. I think it was just under $1,400 for each employee with that, and so in sum, it all came up to about $500,000, a half a million dollars with that share back. And again, just the way to, to recognize and reward our And again, just a way to, to recognize and reward our staff for, for their work and what they do in terms of taking care of patients, making sure patients have access and, and receive the care that they need.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Whitaker, thank you for the presentation and I wanted to say that, I know when I first came on the board, obviously I was, I was very critical of some of the care that my constituents has received, that I received and you took that, I think, very good as constructive criticism and in that short time from, from January to now, I've seen such a huge change in, in the way the hospital's being run. Obviously that's a testament to you, it's a testament to the Board of Trustees, pardon me, and I just, the, the same folks that were calling me saying, well, this went wrong, I, I was treated this way, some of those folks have called me and said, hey, I went back and I got treated really good and I see it because I, I have to go in there for blood work every so often and I, and I see it, it's definitely a different atmosphere and I do appreciate you working with the board, but obviously the buck stops with you and the, the, the bonus that you gave the, the employees to, to share your, your, your extra revenues, that goes a long way to have retention and retain the folks here because we're always concerned that people are leaving, they're leaving for better pay, better workplace, I think you're, you're, you're doing a great job with transparency, I know you're putting yourself out there with the town halls and you're going to get the good and the bad, but at least you're doing that, you're doing what I asked you to do when I first met with you and it, and it shows with what the upcoming town halls, not just here in Silver City, but throughout the whole county, but I, I appreciate what you've done, I hope you continue doing it and just pass along my thanks to the Board of Trustees as well, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Flores, I might just add to that, thank you very much for that, I appreciate that. You know, our, our staff work hard and I, I, you know, I do want to say this and, and say publicly that, you know, we're not perfect, you know, we, we try hard every day to take care of every patient the best we can and, and, and sometimes we, we might miss the mark and I sincerely apologize to anyone who might have an experience that isn't as best as we can provide, but you know, we, we, we do look at every opportunity that comes along and, and we do evaluations and sometimes we do root cause analysis and, and things to see how we can improve and, and make things better, but I, I appreciate the comments that, that we do, our, our staff are incredible and healthcare is hard, you know, people come to us because something's wrong, you know, and, and our staff absorb that and they feel that and it's, it becomes part of their work and what they do and, and they're, they're a wonderful group of, of individuals and caregivers, so thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chair.
Just one last thing there, Mr. Whitaker, just want to really thank you and the board. From 2019, when Grant County Commission started some things, I, I can tell you now that we have you and we've had you for a while, there's been more consistency, I really appreciate that. I can tell you that this Board of Trustees probably has done, and I'm not afraid to say it, a lot better job than when the commissioners were trustees, they, they did good, I, I know that, you know, and I'm not going to make excuses, we're faced with a, a different time when we came along there, but at the end of the day, they, they are doing a good job and you're doing a good job in the consistency there and you're right, like you said, that was going to be one of my comments is, not everything's going to be perfect, not everybody's going to be happy, but at the end of the day, me as a commissioner, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for these commissioners, you know, don't just take the hits yourself, you know, we were part of it and we struggled also, so some of those hits need to come to us, but at the end of the day, I think we developed a great team with you, with your trustees and with our Board of Commissioners, now the new Board of Commissioners and I think we're going to go a long ways and, and I hope that we can have this hospital survive, just, you know, looking around everywhere, how rural hospitals are going down, we're going to work hard, we're going to support you and we're going to do what we need to for our citizens, but I really appreciate what you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
One, or two questions, could you say again the time and the place where the August 21st and the September 18th town halls?
Yes, sir, August 21st is a Thursday here in Silver City at the Veterans Memorial and Business Conference Center. And, and then, oh, I apologize, 6 o'clock, 6:00 PM. We'll have some kind of light snacks and drinks as well there. September 18th, there's a place called Roundup Lodge, Members, okay, just making, yeah, that's where we'll be holding that, again, that's a Thursday, same time. And then on September 11th, we just found this out yesterday, we're solidifying in Tyrone at the Community Center, right, I guess there's a post office right there as well, so at the Community Center, same time, 6:00.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And then a quick compliment also, I try to help a couple of veterans personally and one of them's really rough around the edges and very critical of almost everything, all the way from EMS to hospital and I just wanted to compliment that I, I was there with him through part of that and in spite of the hard to deal with, I was just very impressed with the professionalism and the way he was treated in spite of that, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Chair.
Moving on to next items will be elected official reports, Madam Clerk, do you have a report?
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners, first of all, my office has been working on our upcoming regular local election. So, um, I just wanted to let everybody know that our regular local election deals with our municipal, um, election board members, which is our council members as well as our school board members and our Grant County Soil and Water Conservation Districts, our Deming Conservation Districts and our Hidalgo Council, uh, Conservation Districts. Sign-up day is August 26th from 9:00 to 5:00 in our office. Any individuals that are interested in being on these boards, please contact our office if they have any questions. As well as, our office is diligently working on this election and anybody that has any questions, please feel free to contact our office. And with that, I have, if you guys have any questions?
You know what I have too, because I can't remember, when a municipality or anybody decides to put something on the ballot for, for taxpayers, whether it's bond, whatever it may be, who pays for that? Does municipalities pay for that?
Yes. Well, it, if it's a special election, then it's the municipalities, but if it's going to be placed on our ballot, they're welcome to place it on, they have until August 26th to place it on our ballot currently.
So...
And it's not, so like if our school board member, or our school boards or our municipalities decide to place a bond question, it's on there without being charged to the individual municipalities or the schools.
So then we, as a county, have to, because ballots are, do cost money, correct?
Correct.
And the writings and so forth.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So if the, the schools decide to put a ballot or a bond question on there, it, it's with the schools, but we assume the, or the, I don't even know how to explain, but it, it comes with the ballots, the schools, because it's already impaled in there, so the ballots are already prepared, the bonds are already issued, whatever, so our ballots are ready to go. So if the schools have their bonds ready to go, their questions, they have till the 26th. After that, if they decide, oh, well, we missed the cutoff date and they decide to do a special election, then the school assumes that the individual municipalities assume those, those, and those are considered their special elections and those, those are paid for by the individual schools, the county, the individual municipalities, but these ones are on the regular local elections, so those are, are assumed by the Secretary of State's office.
And if, and, and because I, I was asked this the other day, I don't know if I answered it right, but a special election's mostly mail, mail-out ballot, right?
Correct.
And that's where most of the cost goes is on the, the writings and the mailings and the postage, et cetera, so forth.
And the individual municipality, county or schools assume that.
And then the staffing that they have to go and certify all that too also, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you. Moving on to our Treasurer, Mr. Khan.
Good morning Chairman, Ponce and Commissioners, before I use the tax maintenance report, for the total amount of taxes collected for the month of July is $269,502.23. So far for the 2024 tax rule, $13,448,282.84 has been collected, it's left the county at a collection percentage of 92.83%. For the total 2024 tax rule, $1,039,185.17 remains uncollected. The total percentage collected for the total 10-year collection as of July 31st, 2025 is 95.88%, of which a total of $121,401,890.1 of taxes were collected. That leaves a total uncollected balance of taxes of $5,219,741.26. Status of the Treasurer's Office, the county will be having the property auction on September 10th at 10 o'clock here in the Commission Meeting Room. The Property Tax Division will be opening up registration here in the meeting room at 8 o'clock in the morning. The Treasurer's Office will be selling the auction packets for $5 if anybody's interested in the properties that are in this auction. And this packet lists the requirements of, and process of the auction. With partnership with the Assessor's Office, I want to thank Assessor Misti Trahil for helping us out and creating a QR code that has been produced that's with the list that gives interested bidders information like maps to the property that's on the auctionist to see the logistics of the property. The Property Tax Division will also be publishing this list of information at least three times before the sale. The Treasurer's Office and Solid Waste Department will be closed at 10 o'clock for the auction and resume regular business hours at noon. Anybody that has questions pertaining to the auction, they're welcome to call me or my staff in the Treasurer's Office and you're, or you can also contact the Property Tax Division at 505-827-0881. That concludes my comment.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you Treasurer, Khan. I think I asked before about this, so I apologize if it's a repeat, but with the uncollected taxes, what, what does your office do to try to get some of that money? To try to collect some of those funds?
Chairman Ponce, Commissioner Stevens, thank you, that's a good question, that's, that's an everyday battle on finding delinquencies and collecting to see what's owed. Currently, you know, manufactured homes has been on my hit list since I've been elected as we have a huge delinquency of those. I've also worked and I continue working with the Assessor's Office as we have, I can't call it false value, but just, you know, there's a lot of constituents or property owners that have moved to their manufactured homes and not contacted the county, so it's been just done under the table and has not been done properly like through a title company. A lot of times people just don't forget, so you know, we, we try, I, I do print a delinquency list and if there's anybody that I know, I may contact to, to let them know. What, what helps is the, the auction, so if once they go 36 months deliquent, you know, we do due diligence on sending postcards, that's something extra that I've done since I've been elected. We do send them an extra notice letting them know, you know, you have until June 30th to pay, you're going to be sent for auction coming July. So that does spark a lot of attention and we do get payment, like if you say I had a big collection in July just be, or because of that. Like I said, it's an everyday battle and just trying my best on getting that collected better, you know, the county and everybody that's, that I distribute the property tax to.
Thank you, and for the auction, if people want the details on that, you mentioned the QR code, would that be through the county's website or how can they get information about?
I do currently have a list outside the Treasurer's Office at a table, like I said, we are selling the packet which includes the QR code.
Okay.
The Property Tax Division, they have published the, the list as well on their website. We did, and we used to have that, but since we modified our website, I, I don't know if that moved over, that's something, that's a good question, which I'm going to, when I go back to my desk, I will investigate and research to see if that's still there, if not, I'll get with IT to see if they can link the, the web, Property Tax Division's website to the, the Treasurer's site on the county.
Thank you.
You're welcome, good question.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Moving on to your Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to make a statement on something that has occurred. In June of 2025, the Grant County Sheriff's Office was notified of a possible incident which an employee may have received public funds for services not rendered specifically through the drought fire overtime budget. Upon receiving this information, I immediately initiated an internal investigation. As the investigation progressed, the New Mexico State Police were notified to investigate the allegations and potential criminal offenses. The New Mexico State Police conducted their own investigation and have filed charges on the deputy involved. No personnel information will be released at this time as it is still an ongoing internal investigation. As the Sheriff of Grant County, I am deeply disappointed by these allegations and greatly disturbed by what has occurred. I do not condone this behavior. Any allegations of any misconduct will not be tolerated. I remain committed to fulfilling the duties of this office and I will work diligently to guide, maintain order and enforce discipline within my office. I hold myself and all deputies to the highest standards of integrity and professionalism. I just want the public to, to understand that these type of incidents are time-consuming and there's policies and procedures, there's due process that the employees have that we have to follow, so I, I, I get that the public wants answers right away, but we have procedures that are in place that I have to follow. If something comes out of it, I guarantee that it will be handled appropriately and accordingly. I thank the community for their support and, and for their support and reaching out and wanting to know what's going on, I appreciate their concerns and I take them to my heart and I will do everything in my power to make sure that these things do not continue to happen.
That's your report. Any questions, comments? Thank you, Sheriff. So moving on to the consent... So moving on to the consent agenda, which is going to take July eighth, two thousand and twenty-five work session meeting, July tenth, regular meeting, July twenty-fourth, regular meeting, the expenditure report and the indigent claims. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agendas presented. Also, I'd like to make a comment that any executive session that we had, only the items on that executive session were discussed and that no action was taken.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Medina, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to new business. Under item F, Natural Resource Conservation Services, Emergency Watership Protection Application for Funding.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Shaly, do we have any discussion?
Quick comment.
Go ahead.
This manager, I want to tell you, thank you for bringing this to our attention, it's pretty important. Staying ahead of the game is really important, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I think I bought it the wrong time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item G, be advanced Communications Code for Installing repeaters and antenna for the Cliff Hila volunteer fire department. Total is sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-six cents.
Want your approval?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Flores. Just for discussion, these will come out of the fire funds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to, hold on here. Okay, moving on to item H, be the RFP twenty-six dash zero one, Disaster Recovery On-Call Contract Award.
I move to approve.
Second.
So, I like, can you, can you amend your motion to approve with what was recommended? And I believe that was, recommendation was DRC, Emergency Services Corp. King, I'm sorry, that was one of the, King Industries Corporation?
I amend my motion, I move to approve the, the recommended contractor.
Thank you.
I second that.
So a motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Shaly, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to agreements, agreement eight dash twenty-five dash eighteen, that's Capitol Valley Grant Agreement.
Move your approval.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, moving on to the next one. Agreement A dash twenty-five dash nineteen, another Capitol Valley Agreement for project.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Flores, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item K, it's Agreement A dash twenty-five twenty, it's Cost of Care Agreement between the Counties of Grant and Burnaleo, New Mexico pertaining to Youth Services Center.
Motion approved.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to Resolution R dash twenty-five dash fifty-three, authorizing the expenditure funds under the existing on-call NCA architect for the Pino Sartos Volunteer Fire Department Station.
Your approval.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, Commissioner reports, Commissioner Flores, do you have a report?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Medina?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Stevens?
I just wanted to say a couple things. One, I wanted to thank Mary Ray for putting some good information on the county's Facebook page. I've been seeing a lot of good resources on there and recently shared one about free wood chips from the fire suppression efforts with the Trout Fire and I think things like that are appreciated by a lot of people. And then I was recently approached by a citizens group that wants to work on fire preparedness. So I told them to put together a little letter about what it is they're hoping to do and then I'll share that with our, with you, County Manager. That's it, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Shaly?
Just one thing, the, in spite of all the controversy, et cetera, our fishing game, New Mexico Fishing Game Department never has met in, in Catron County and they are planning to do that on Friday and any of us are invited to attend that meeting. It starts at nine up at Reserve in the high school, I believe at the high school. So it's an opportunity to go hear what they're talking about and offer comment. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. So, just have a few comments here. This morning, I received a call, County Manager, about Seapark Road, coming off of I-ten and the, and the road because of all the traffic and so forth. That's getting pretty terrible. I did explain to the lady that, you know, we are trying to catch up and that every time we have a little chance to catch up and get another rainstorm, but that we would look at it as soon as possible and let them know that our people are busy, so. That was quick. The other, the other thing that, that I want to bring up and it's really more frustrating to me and is an article that I have here in front of me from Silver City Daily Press. And the article starts with, "Longtime Silver City Town Manager Alex Brown announced on Tuesday to Town Council meeting that he will retire at the end of the year, citing the lack of respect from two members of the council." You know, Brown had originally been scheduled to retire last November, but the mayor negotiated a two-year contract with Brown after making public appeal for him to reconsider. In that appeal, the mayor cited the number of projects the town was involved in or that were pending at this time. Tuesday, Brown cited actions by District Two Councilor Nate Prince and District Three Councilor Stanton Snyder at the July twenty-ninth council meeting for his decision to retire. And it basically comes into a lack of respect. You know, I've known Town Manager Mr. Brown since high school, he was a great football player. And back then, I don't know how it is now, once my kid left high school, but it was a big rivalry between Silver and Colbry. This man came in to be a finance director when I worked with the Silver City Police Department. He's a good person, great person, he went on to move to county manager. To me, the town of Silver City does not understand what manager they have there and what he's done for this community. This man has done wonders for the town of Silver City. His finance department has done great. And what's disturbing to me is that you have two council members that don't understand what they have there. You know, in today's age, it seems like the louder you are, the more attention you get. And you only, sometimes you only sit there and listen to certain groups and certain people that are pushing you to do things. And we forget that as elected members of these, of the community, we have to represent everyone, not just a certain few or not just the loudest group. They're going to miss Town Manager Alex Brown and I'm going to tell you right now, it's going to be difficult for them to get another county manager like Mr. Brown. But if that's what the town council decided to push and go through, while I wish them luck because there is nobody like Mr. Brown for Silver City. He was born, he was raised here, he cares about his community. Look at the things he's done, he was very instrumental. You know, as Commissioners, Town Council, we always get kids don't have enough to do in Silver City. They don't have this, they don't have that. Look at the instrumental part he had putting that rec center together, giving the kids something to do. Look at the things that he has done for the community, look at their finances, how strong they are and what he does for our community. And it's a shame that you have someone like that, but because of special interest, you know, they decide to look at other things. You know, what sort of bothers me too is I don't know what direction they want to head or what, what direction they're going to head, but at the end of the day, they, they're going to lose somebody that they're going to wish they had back because of that. You know, when I worked in administrative position as a captain with Silver City Police Department, even as a chief or deputy chief, Mr. Brown, when we had something, a violent or serious crime happen within the town of Silver City, you know, my job was to let him know. He would come out, he would sit next to me in that police car, not to micromanage, he cared about his community. He wanted to know what we could do, what resources we needed, making sure that the officers had everything they needed to do the job that they needed to do to help our community. That's the type of person he is. You know, you go talk to him, if you're reasonable and sensible, he's going to give you money. He's going to help you, he's going to help your budget. Many people from this community have approached him to help them in the community, to do certain things for him, for them in this community, and he has been there. Now, is everybody in this community liked, is every, no. I mean, elected officials aren't liked, maybe sometimes because your first name's Chris. Maybe it's because you have a D or an R. But at the end of the day, this man did what he needed to do for his community. The other thing that sort of strikes me is, as an elected official, if you're in a town council, county commission, one of your biggest priorities is public safety. It's public safety, you know, you have water sores, et cetera, going along with all this public safety. This man understands that and he worked hard. You know, it seems like lately in the town of Silver, there's just been a tax on law enforcement. You know, trying to get rid of two thousand dollars, come on. You're going to lose a county manager because you don't understand what that money's used for? Because you don't take the time to see what that money's for? You know, I attended a meeting for the fire. You know, and I'm not sure what other Commissioners were there, I had, I'm not going to mention his name. I had one of the town council members, and maybe I should mention his name. Town council members come to me while I'm trying to listen and understand what's happening with our fires because of our public and public safety and what's in danger. And his biggest concern, and he even approached the Sheriff, was because of one of his buddies was put in jail for running a roadblock and trying to run over a state police officer and deputies. And that was his biggest concern at that time, asking how do we get him out of jail? That is unethical. Could I file an ethics complaint? Yeah, and I'm not afraid. One thing I'm going to tell you about me is I will not sign anything anonymous. I was in law enforcement for twenty-five years, twenty-four years. There's a lot of complaints out there and people sitting in prison, because my name was put on it, so I'm not worried about putting complaints on anybody. But what disturbs me is that the focus that has been lost and what this man has done for the town of Silver City. You know, and I sit up here, do me and our county manager see eye to eye all the time? Do we agree on anything? No, we don't. But there's a time and a place to sit down and explain to each other why we don't agree with it and what needs to be done. At the end of the day, as a Commissioner and as a Chair of this Commission, it is to support your county manager and her staff with what they need to do. You know, my biggest thing when I started being a Commissioner and I started looking at all these things that we have with tax, with this, was to her, keep me out of prison, do things right. And you know what, she's done a great job doing that. And she's had to sit me down and explain to me, because I'm a little stubborn, everybody knows that. Everybody hears me that I'm probably the most vocal person up here and I say stuff and probably get the most hate mail, that's fine, I don't care, this is part of my job. She's done great, this is what they don't see. I don't know what the agenda is, I don't know what's going on, but I can tell you, they've lost a great man, when he retires, he was the best thing that happened for town of Silver City. And I'm going to tell you, citizens of Silver City, be careful what you wish for and be careful who you vote for. Because Silver City is going to go through a little turmoil. I don't care who the Assistant Town Manager is, this man had the experience, had the education and was from this community. And I am deeply saddened that we have two town councils doing this. I think what needs to be happening is they need to listen to their constituents because there's a lot of bigger things that they should be working on other than what they're working on. And the same thing for our Commission, there's a lot of bigger things that we need to work on too. Just doesn't go one side. But I am, I'm saddened by this, I really am. And send a hate mail, do whatever you got, I don't, that's fine with me. This man was a great person and this is what happens to him for doing his job. No, that's not right and I've said it. And if any of you town council members want to talk to me, talk to me, call me. I'll meet you, we'll have coffee, we'll do whatever we need to, so you know, understand where I'm coming from. Anyway, I'm going to get off of that one. The other thing that, that I really want to do is, and it's in our budget, and I don't know if I can bring it up, but I'm bringing it up, so. In, and I want to take my hat off to our county manager, to our Assistant County Manager, is our county manager, and this is very important to us Commissioners, is the way we take care of our people. Our county manager and our Assistant Finance Director, Assistant County Manager, I don't know if I'm getting the title right, but anyway, they took it upon themselves to put a five percent increase in the budget for our employees. You know, employees, you ought to be thankful for that, because I'm going to give, tell you something. The leadership in our union missed an opportunity to open up negotiations for a raise or for whatever else they needed. They missed that opportunity. It is not management's responsibility to remind them of these opportunities. It is their responsibility to put it on their calendars when these timeframes come in to negotiate wages. Our county manager and her staff took it upon themselves to put an increase for all our employees. That's what a county manager does and that's what her staff does. So I really appreciate what they've done. I really, and I hope that our employees really appreciate and see that, that we're not just, that they're not just thinking of themselves, they're thinking of the employees that we have and that our Commission is, is voting for this budget and also caring for our employees. So I thank you and I appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, give me time to breathe. Go ahead.
Nice you said. Nice you said across the board, thank you.
Anyway, so I apologize to the- Anyway, so I apologize to the public. I am frustrated and I'd hate to see our town manager go. And I do wanna tell him thank you. I appreciate everything you've done for Silver City. I wish you would reconsider. Things will get better hopefully here soon. So thank you, uh, Mr. Brown. Anything else, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just, my, every, every interaction, I, I appreciate your confidence. Every interaction I've had with, uh, our town manager has been excellent, very, very professional. I respect him deeply. And, um, I forgot to say one thing, probably, uh, also very important. I don't wanna take away from the passion and the, and what you've said, but I, I just wanted Sheriff Ian Noeva to, I, I wanted to say thank you for coming back and speaking to us about there. I really do want to put, make sure that we, as a county, I would like to see us put something in the budget for that and, and, and find a way to fund it properly. I'm proud of what you all have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shali. Yes, and Commissioner Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanna echo Commissioner Medina and Commissioner Shali. Uh, very well said about, uh, missing Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown has always been, uh, good to the city. He's been good to me. Every time I've gone to him, he's been, uh, very open-minded. I, I do hope as well that he does reconsider, because, uh, the one thing I will miss about him is the way he ran meetings. Very, very quick, very effective, very efficient. Um, yeah, that, that's one thing I'm gonna miss. If he does leave, hopefully he can reconsider. But, um, yeah, watching that, that town council meeting that we're talking about right now was, um, really disturbing to, to me as a commissioner, because it, it just, it was almost comical for those of you that haven't seen it, going back and forth and, uh, uh, I'm just so glad that we, this commission here respects each other's opinion. Whether we, uh, agree on everything or we don't agree, we still have that respect for our county manager, for elected officials, um, and, and that goes to your leadership, Mr. Chair, and to all of you as commissioners. I, I thank you for that and I'm, I'm glad that has never happened here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Can I have a motion to go into executive session in accordance with NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, ten dash fifteen dash one, sub H two, limited personnel matters?
So move.
Second.
So a motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman and Commissioners, are you all aware you're entering into executive session? Chairman Ponse?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina?
Yes.
Commissioner Shali?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Flores?
Yes.
Okay. We shouldn't, we'll be out in three minutes, two minutes. We do have action, I believe. Can I have a motion to come out of executive session, please?
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner, uh, Shali to come out of executive session. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to next item, is any act- action necessary as a result of the closed executive session?
Mr. Chair? I make a motion to approve amendment number two, county manager. Motion, uh, let me amend that. Amendment, amend that. A motion to approve amendment number two to county manager employment agreement.
I'll second.
Some, uh, motion by, uh, Commissioner Flores. Have a second by Commissioner Medina. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Last order of business.